The 5:00 PM agenda review session will begin now, following the city council meeting of August 21st, 2024, of approval of amendment to the Department of Public Safety's 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 Public Hearing and supporting this on the second reading. Number one, in order to amend and supplement your five internal ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking Section, 1020-010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, heading 90 Harvick Street, 23 North Ward Street, 148 Comstock Street, and 64 Remsen Avenue. Number two, in order to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the City of New Brunswick and 11 Spring Street Urban Renewal LLC, that's 11 Spring Street, Block 16, Lot 4.01. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, in order to amend and supplement, uh, 022304, for an additional amount not to exceed $34 million for water treatment plant upgrades. Number two, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water utility. It invites the City of New Brunswick not to exceed $12,425,000 for lead service line replacements. We then have resolutions. Uh, number one, approve agenda amendments. Number two, approve payroll, create authorized refund or redeem tax sales certificates. Number four, approve request for street closing requested by Ruckus University Student Centers and Activities for their annual homecoming charity charities. Number five, approve renewal agreement with Cigna Healthcare, HMO. Uh, number six, approve Title 39 agreement between 88 Lowe Street, LLC and the City of New Brunswick for New Brunswick Police Department Enforcement. Number seven is approve relaxation of the City Noise Ordinance and temporary road closure requested by the Yogi Group for the road closure of Byard Street to disconnect and install new water sanitary sewer and fire lines for Pathic Street. It will also be closed for the install of new train, storm drain. Number eight, approve relaxation of the City Noise Ordinance requested by Maxine Crane Orders. Number nine, approve release of performance guaranteed escrow deposit for JCPH Construction. Number 10 is approve release of performance guaranteed escrow deposit to the Fairman at the Northeast LLC. And number 11, approve ABC liquor license renewal for 2425 for Honey New Brunswick LLC, Honey Ringing House. 12, approve amendment of resolution R092321, raise additional amount of $6,000 to the Institute for Forensic Psychology. 13, approve rejection of bids for electric vehicle curbside charging. 14 is resolution to approve UEZ Clean Team contract with MBPA for 2425. 15 is resolution to approve Clean Team contract with MBPA for 2425. Number 16 is approve Chapter 159 budget insertion state of New Jersey for the UEZ grant for $155,000. 17 is approve request for the use of city property requested by El Toro Entertainment for Joyce Kimber Park. 18 is approve request for the use of city property requested by Care Spark, Community Connections for Sustainable Health and Wellness Village Festival. Number 19, approved request for street closing requested by Ruckus University for Scarlet Day of Service. Number 20 is authorize the tax collector to transfer overpayments on several tax and utility accounts. 21 is approve award contract with Rent Material Company, the Furnish and Deliver Gate Valves and for the water utility. 22, approve award contract with JD Swanton Fuel Oil Company. 23 is authorize refund to Tower EB13 Trust, 2023 FS1, in a total amount of $543.41 against utility accounts 4720-0. 24 is approve request to reserve parking spaces requested by Ruckus University Student Affairs for cultural fest and meet the Greeks. 25, approve award contract with the Wireless Electronics Incorporated doing business as wireless communications and electronics. 26, approve amendment of resolution R092324 to change order number one with Top Line Construction Corporation for Van Dyke Avenue roadway improvements. 27 is authorize refund to ProCap 8 LLC in total amount of $150.27 against utility accounts 3823-0, Lot 407, Lot 18, for Woodbridge Streets. 28, authorize refund to the Brunswick Parking Authority in the total amount of $794.24 against utility accounts 6141. Number 29, approve request for use of city property requested by Joshua Jones for a ticket with kids in the Bugle Park. And number 30, approve renewal of liquor license for special rolling for 2425, for 253 Route 27 Incorporated in that. We then have items of discussion by council with any public comment. And it needs to remember September 4th at the next city council meeting. The agenda first, and then the city council after that. All right. The meeting will come to order. Clerk, please roll.
Councilmember Castaneda? Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming is absent. Councilmember Gaston is absent. Councilmember Secor Ledwig?
Here.
And Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Council President Estobar is absent.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave an efficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings for the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed, the city clerk has been placed on a appropriate bulletin board in City Hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely The Home News. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment, providing for our men and women of our military, especially those that have extreme sacrifices of their lives. First responders?
Move the minutes. Councilmember Castaneda? Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ledwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Now, Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department for correspondence?
Yes, Council President, Council Vice President, the correspondence received by the City Clerk's Office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action. Council Vice President, at this time, I would like to present my certification for petitions submitted on July 19th and the supplementary petition submitted on August 12th, 2024.
Thank you.
As a duly appointed city clerk of the City of New Brunswick, I am making the certification as required by NJSA 40:69A-187, in connection with petitions filed in my office on July 19th, 2024, and supplementary petition filed on August 12th, 2024, desiring to propose an ordinance entitled, an ordinance created titled "Nine Elections," Chapter 1, Local Elections. Question, shall all individuals, regardless of immigration status or citizenship, who are 16 years of age or will be 16 years of age, on or before the next local election, and have recited in the corporate limits of the City of New Brunswick for a minimum period of 30 days, immediately proceeding any non-runoff election, be eligible to register to vote? And if so registered, be registered to vote in any local election? I have completed my review of the amendment supplementary petition filed aloud under NJSA 40:69A-188, and hereby find that the supplementary petition insufficient. The petition included 122 signatures. Of the 122 signatures, 32 signatures are invalid. The total amount of signatures of qualified voters is 90. However, in review of the affidavits of circulators, there are inconsistencies on the affidavit, affidavit of circulator resulting in the signatures associated with the affidavit being defective and cannot be counted. The total amount of defective signatures is 73 out of the overall 90 qualified voters whom signed. Therefore, the total amount of signatures accepted between both petitions are 135 valid signatures, short of the minimum required of 215 signatures. Furthermore, in my certification dated August 8th, 2024, I stated it is the city attorney's opinion that the initiative petition is void due to the attempt to enact legislation locally that is preempted by the state statute. The proposed ordinance enactment is in direct conflict with the voting requirements as prescribed by the New Jersey Constitution and the New Jersey state statutes under Title 19, specifically NJSA 19:31-5. I am today notifying each members of the Committee of Petitioners of this certification as decided above by regular and certified mail. This certification is dated August 19th, 2024, and signed by me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we have no public hearing. We have ordinances for discussion on the second reading. Start with number one, in order to amend and supplement, revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking Section, 1020-010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, where at 90 Harvick Street, 23 North Ward Street, 148 Comstock Street, and 64 Remsen Avenue. Any of my fellow council members have any questions on this ordinance? We are preparing to open the public hearing on the ordinance only for up to five minutes per person at one time up. Any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council in the microphone, please give your name and address, and you have up to five minutes. Seeing none.
Move the order. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ledwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
And number two, in order to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the City of New Brunswick and 11 Spring Street Urban Renewal LLC, 11 Spring Street, Block 16, Lot 4.01. Any fellow council members have any questions or comments? Okay, we're prepared to open the public hearing on the ordinance only for up to five minutes per person at one time up here. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council by the microphone, please give your name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
Yes. Good evening, Council. Charlie Cradaville, 11 St. Am Street, I'm the head of New Brunswick today. I'd like to ask if the developer has a representative here tonight?
I believe so.
Thank you. Could you ask the planning director what the total approximate cost of the project is?
You have the answer, please.
Offhand, uh, it was in the realm of 130-ish million, plus or minus 10 million. So let's call it 120 to 140 range.
Thank you. Have you calculated the cost of the abatement?
I'm not, I'm not sure what he means by that, that's a question.
Okay. Any idea how many high-quality jobs are anticipated in connection with the project?
Do you need to?
Yeah, I'm just using the language, it's in the resolution.
Okay, any idea?
Offhand, I don't remember. It's, it's in the application, it's the construction jobs to be created, uh, you know, while the building's under construction.
Are there any permanent jobs associated or anticipated?
There will probably be maintenance people, plus there should be a cafe or some other commercial establishment created at the bottom of the building that would create some semblance of permanent job structure, though I imagine, you know, not a ton of jobs in that permanent structure.
Right on, okay. So the Section 1D references high-quality jobs, it also makes reference to, quote, "the cost of the tax abatement." Have you calculated the cost of the tax abatement? What, what the, you know, uh, difference would be between full taxes being paid and, you know, an abatement, you know, a discount?
That would be a number that I would defer to an assessor to take the numbers and calculate them out. I, I don't think it is an accurate, uh, way of weighing the value of the project, as without the abatement, the project would not be constructed. So it's not really weighing a hypothetical, let's call it, making up a number, $3 million versus a million dollars, it's a million dollars versus zero. Um, so I, I don't think that that's an appropriate or fair way of weighing the project.
So what, you know, is the planning director saying that there is a cost calculation that's just different than the one I would do? Has there been a cost calculated?
To my knowledge, not formally.
Okay. Because the resolution that you're, you know, about to pass tonight, or the ordinance you're about to pass tonight, states that you've determined that the development would result in new housing, 20% affordable, and high-quality jobs that will benefit the city of its residents when compared to the cost of the tax abatement. And it just seems like you haven't done the calculation on the cost of the tax abatement. And I would encourage you to look at a couple of different scenarios and models, because this is a plot of land that's just steps away from the New Brunswick train station in an area where they're planning to build 30 stories tall almost. Um, I, I would think there's a lot of incentive for the developer to build there, whether they get exemption or not. And I think that you should anticipate that being a priority for developers to build in downtown. They want to build housing in downtown, so I don't think you necessarily have done the calculations to decide if it's worth it to give them a huge discount on their taxes. And yeah, I'll look, uh, in Section 3A, there's a reference to Exhibit A, and it's missing. I don't have a copy of Exhibit A. Is Exhibit A available to the public?
Not exactly sure what Exhibit A is off the top of my head.
It says, "The mayor, in consultation with legal counsel, is hereby authorized and directed to execute the financial agreement substantially in the form as it has been presented to the city council attached here to its Exhibit A." Council, do you have a copy attached to your ordinance? Do you have Exhibit A? Do you have that financial agreement in your possession?
It's a blank form of financial agreement with none of its spaces filled in, it hasn't been finalized yet. The form of agreement is the same form we use each and every time. So certainly, if you want the blank form, we can provide that to Mr. Cradaville.
Like text with blanks?
That's all it is.
Okay, I would like to, to see that for future reference, and yeah, I would just encourage you to be cautious about approving these discounts for developers, because they hurt our school system. The funds that would be paid and moved taxes go only to the city and the county and not to the schools, so I think that's not right.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Anyone else on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the order. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ledwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have ordinances on first reading, in order to amend and supplement, 022304, for additional amount not to exceed $34 million for water treatment plant upgrades.
Move the order, setting down Wednesday, September 4th, 5:00 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ledwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Number two, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water utility. It invites the City of New Brunswick not to exceed $12,425,000 for lead service line replacements.
Move the ordinance, setting down Wednesday, September 4th, 5:00 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ledwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, we have resolutions 1 through 30. Any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on these resolutions? At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for public comment on the resolutions only. Uh, at this time, uh, please, you have up to five minutes. Please give us the number, give us your name and address for the record, and approach the council through the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, 11 St. Am Street today. First one that I wanted to ask about was the electric vehicle curbside charging. Can you tell me what was the plan and, uh, why are you rejecting the bids? Do you remember them? Oh, sorry. Ends in 057.
Thursday.
Thursday, thank you.
Mr. Cradaville?
Sure.
Um, so we have been noticing an increase in electrical vehicle ownership, uh, in the 64 Mainly College Ave area, and so we went out and put out an RFP for, looking for a vendor who would be willing at their expense to run all the infrastructure and create on-street charging, uh, for residents of that neighborhood, which is where we have a significant number of EVs that are charging with, uh, you know, electrical cables across the sidewalk and otherwise, you know, public safety issues, and there could be a tangible public benefit. Um, the issue was, we got one response only, and the one responded wanted to do, well, in our proposal, in our RFP, when we put it out, we wanted to do six to 12 locations scattered about. We set six main ones and, uh, six optional ones at the vendor's recommendation, to, so that they could put their, their gears turning. Uh, their submission was those six to 12 locations, however, they wanted, their charge would have two arms, so they wanted two dedicated contiguous spaces at every stop. And while there is a market for onsite vehicle charging in that neighborhood, and we think that a few scattered, one-off spaces could be dedicated to EVs in that way, that doing two at this time would end up creating a further compounding of a parking issue by not, by functionally eliminating a parking space for most of, if not all of, the day throughout these areas. So we're going to look to tweak the RFP, keep an eye out this year if the trend still holds, and revisit it early next year if it does.
If they asked what neighborhood this was?
64 Mainly College Ave.
Mainly College Ave, okay. Like, ask about the next, 14 and 15, the Clean Team Services. Can you clarify for me the difference between the, uh, sort of city center Clean Team and the UEZ?
So, uh, UEZ funding, funds for Clean Team Services by the Parking Authority outside of the SID, outside of the Special improvement district, New City Market. And the other one is an agreement between us and the Parking Authority to supplement the cleaning within the SID, which is then the other portion of which is paid for by City Market with their own contract between themselves and the Parking Authority.
So in both places, it's the Parking Authority doing the work, it's just contracted with two different entities?
It's just depending on where the funding's coming from. One of them, it's coming direct from general funds, one is coming from UEZ funds.
Okay. Would like to ask about the final resolution, number 30. Can you tell me just answer this liquor license? Is this the old Corona bar?
Council President, Council Vice President, yes. Mr. Cradaville, this is the previous Corona bar. It's been inactive since May of 2020. So this is just a process that we have to renew the liquor license.
Okay. Since I have a little extra time, I'd like to ask about number five, the Cigna Healthcare contract. Can you just tell me the amount of the contract?
Of course. Uh, the amount is for $639,445, now it's against June 30th, 2024.
And was there a broker for this?
Uh, yes, uh, there is, it's corporate synergies, it's a broker for.
Synergies, yeah. And is there a specific number for their fee associated with this, or?
No, no, that's something else. This is just the, the cost of the Cigna Healthcare.
Oh, so there's no fee included within this, but there's corporate synergies, it's a separate agreement?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, I have one, 11 St. Street. First, I would go back to what Mr. Cradaville was saying, uh, 14, 15, and 16. Okay, I understand that 15, this is with the Parking Authority. Honestly, I have to say the price is lower, but due to where, once again, I would speak on what? I do not see all of these streets getting cleaned. Eastern Avenue, French Street, Remson Avenue, and George Street. Basically, George Street and the main areas, we hardly ever see anyone cleaning, that's Remson Avenue, and like I said, French Street as well. But now, my, my question is with some of these other team, other ones, uh, 14 and 16, due to where, speaking of cleaning, I know someone did mention, are, are they going to be in different type of areas due to where the main area, I noticed that you clean Townsend, Townsend Street, even though you push, they push away, push them to one area, and they come back. I think it's time to where, what, if you're going to have someone cleaning, it's time to clean Pittman Park up before the kids go back to school, due to where, so are these special places that these Clean Teams other would, would be, or just anywhere that needs it in the city?
Uh, they're limited, the number 14 one is limited to the urban enterprise zone areas, so functionally, we're looking at, uh, the parts of George Street that aren't in the Special improvement district, Eastern Avenue up to about Barlett Street, French Street, and, uh, parts of Remson Avenue.
So, so please tell me, it's like you're paying twice, twice for the same, same area? And if you're, if you're just saying what the Parking Authority, what, New Brunswick Parking Authority, where they get paid 67,000 to clean Eastern Avenue, French Street, Remson Avenue, and George Street, and then what, once again, for the other one, that you get $155,000 for, what, we went through this before for, honestly? Like I said, waste of money, because I don't see things being done, and believe me, I'm a little person where I do see a lot of things, and like I said, please, one thing I asked for, please, clean up around the school, schools, due to where, what, all these rats around the, the over by Jersey Avenue, the new school, I asked over six weeks, due to where, and I did put a video up on public, so you can see all the rats running around over there. Has anything been done? So like I said, where, I know we have a few dishonest people, crooks and all, but like I said, I don't see the money that you are getting going to be what it's supposed to be doing. All I say is you're just helping the Parking Authority with their debt, and that's like how you've been doing the past four years with that, due to what, like I said, I don't see these streets getting cleaned. But like I said, hopefully, either you start giving these people tickets, to, to, to where, what, as a resident, 47 years, we used to get tickets, why don't they? New Brunswick was never this dirty, and especially not with all these rats running up and down broad daylight on the street where you can't even sit, sit on your place, your, your porch without seeing these. Come on, it's time for you, due to where, just because it's not in your area, it's time for you to start really getting these inspectors out here to get this neighborhood cleaner. A rat has 12 babies every other month. What, it only costs $250 for the outdoor exterminator, I would say thank you, Jesus, due to where, since I'm my, my landlord, my next-door neighbor, that next-door neighbor, since you guys don't have any issue, but while they're tearing through a lot of concrete and all, I, I think it's time for certain things to really be cleaned, cleaned, because New Brunswick was never this damn dirty before.
Anyone else in the public on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions?
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ledwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, we have, uh, any other discussion by the council?
I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Labor Day. I don't think we need to go in again, I'm correct, may come on. And thank all of the union workers that we have in the city, all of our police department, fire department, special services, and all of the employees of the city.
Again, we made special note that school will be starting up, uh, so please be careful, watch your school buses, please stop when you see the red lights, uh, even if you might be in a hurry, it's not worth the child's life. At this time, we're prepared to open the meeting for a public comment for up to five minutes per person at one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak during this public comment portion of the meeting, please approach the council through the microphone, please give your name and address for the record, you have up to five minutes.
I guess that may be first.
Sure.
I, I'm going to ask my clerk, 11 St. Am Street, so a few questions for today. I do want to ask first for a petition on a statement that was made earlier by the clerk about the insufficient petition. She had noted that the petition was not valid in part because of inconsistency with state law, but wasn't explicit in terms of in what way it was inconsistent with the law, so I'm wondering if the city attorney could clarify that?
If you want to.
We happen to. The proposed ordinance in the initiative petition seeks to enact legislation on a local level that allows 16 and 17-year-olds to vote, not only in local school board elections, but in local elections. That particular. That particular question, the ordinance, also proposes that the individuals be eligible to vote regardless of immigration or US citizen status. There is something called the New Jersey State Constitution which prescribes otherwise. And there's also type nineteen, which gets its authority from the Constitution that also directs otherwise. There is a doctrine in the law and in New Jersey called preemption doctrine. Preemption means a local municipality and local government such as the city of New Brunswick cannot enact legislation that is contrary to legislation that's been enacted by the Constitution of the state and statutes that have been enacted by the state. So, my opinion, plain and simple, is that this particular area of the law has been preempted by the state. The only way that this law could be adopted by the city of New Brunswick is if the state legislature approved amendments to state statutes in the Constitution were to allow so. To put this question before the council, place it on the ballot, will be void, it's illegal. It's void ab initio, in my opinion, which means it's void from the onset. You cannot do it.
Right, so you listed two aspects there, the citizenship status and the age requirement. So, is it both of those things you're saying?
Both of those.
Or not, or not according to state law?
Both.
I mean, I'm less familiar with the, you know, citizenship aspect in terms of voting rights there, but I know that the state legislature is currently considering legislation to adjust the voting age for sixteen, seventeen-year-olds to be able to vote in school board and school elections. Is that conceptually something that the council would be in support of the state legislature doing? Just random council members to.
I'd have to see what they propose to it first.
Right, I understand that the details matter, but, you know, in concept, in terms of sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, you know, let's say sixteen and seventeen-year-olds who are citizens and long-term residents of the city of New Brunswick, to be allowed to vote in local and school board elections, is that something as a concept that the council members are in support of?
Well, it's hypothetical, so I have to wait till the legislature passes through.
Right, I mean, that's frankly not a particularly good answer because I'm asking, would you be in support of the legislature taking that action? And that's a clear answer to a question on whether or not you desire the legislature to take such action. And it is commonplace across the state for local government bodies to pass resolutions either in support of or against pending state legislation. And that is a fact that this council has done on one of the occasions in the past on other state legislation. So, it's, I don't think it's for an idea that I'm asking about now.
Again, I'm not speaking for everybody here, they can speak for themselves. I would have to see the whole legislative law first.
Is there any other council members that would like to make a statement?
I would generally support looking into the concept until I actually see what's available or will not be a determination.
Okay, well, the legislation is certainly available to be read. There's been quite a lot of coverage on it. I'm happy to send that around to the council members as well for additional research. I'll also note that it's not uncommon for the, you know, the mechanism for a trigger ordinance if a council does want to enact something locally that is not currently allowed by the state, but is pending approval by the state, putting in a trigger mechanism, so, for what?
Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Chris Ikannam, I live in the two seventeen North Street. I'd like to ask the city attorney about an explanation for rejecting the ordinance. Are you familiar with the Home Rule Act?
Actually, technically, everything has to go through me.
Oh, can you ask him to explain if he's familiar with the Home Rule Act? As well as the fact that sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are already allowed to vote in New York, New Jersey?
I'm happy to answer that question. I am very familiar with the Home Rule Act. And to the contrary, your statement is not accurate. Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are not allowed to vote anymore. Quite frankly, they passed an ordinance that doesn't take effect until 2026. And I think what NORC is doing is awaiting the state legislation to catch up. So, I am not going to opine about NORC's legal matters because I represent this city and this council. But I will tell you is that, in my opinion, this particular ordinance, proposed ordinance, petition on its face is preempted by state constitution and state statute.
Interesting. Anyway, speaking to the ordinance itself, I do think that all council members should seriously consider reading through the ordinance and supporting it going forward. This is not the end of this. You'll see once again, and you'll see many more of your community members will be back to talk about this issue. It will spread, and it will keep going. This is not the end.
Mr. Vice President, if I could just state, this is not an issue that this city council has the legal authority to decide. It's my opinion that we have to put it to the state legislature. The state legislature, so elects to amend the state statutes with the Constitution, amend the Constitution, then perhaps this council would have the ability, would be directed to so allow this type of voting by individuals to this age.
I thought that it was only a response to you. I'm not like holding him outside of like, what is he even doing? You want to correct me on the procedure?
You walked away.
Oh, Lord, Tommy, don't even start it, girl. You cannot be for real right now.
Being asked to be to talk.
You're being absolutely ridiculous. You're letting this guy, right, who, you know, he's not, like, what are you even doing? Like, why are you making comments? This is not your time to speak, okay? So, don't speak on it.
It is his time to speak, and I asked him to speak when you moved to sit down.
No, you did not.
We'll go back.
Unbelievable, okay? You cannot be serious, my dude, it's on video.
Exactly, take a look at it.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. I think the voters will remember this. I certainly will. I vote, and my neighbors vote. Like, you show more respect for the lawyer than you do the actual citizens of New Brunswick. That's ridiculous.
I disagree with you.
Sir, listen, I'm going to address you directly. You're getting in the way of actual citizens who want something. You're one man, and you're standing in the way of democracy because of your own personal opinions, okay?
Mr. Anderson, can I just respond to that?
Sure.
I am only one person that I'm a lawyer with my opinion. I'll grant you that, okay? But when I became a lawyer and when I took this job, I swore to an oath, okay? And I take that oath very seriously. That oath was to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of this state and all of the laws of this particular state. I am upholding my oath to the Constitution, in my legal opinion, as to this particular ordinance and its proposed legislation. I'm doing my job, ma'am. If you disagree with that, that's fine, like I said.
I do disagree with that. I think you're just standing in the interest of the mayor because this would enfranchise twenty percent of the New Brunswick population who probably wouldn't vote for the mayor that you support. Period.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. First, I'm going to start off with, due to where, I spoke on my arm situation, how I'm a slinger out of a sling. But I'm going to say, the more with your officers, where they're trying to make me out of a liar, that was seventy-six, excuse me, eight sixteen, or whatever Friday date was, due to where, I believe some of whom are watching me like I'm faking, due to where I told you I can't keep this sling on permanently, and sometimes I have to take it off. Now, due to where that's with the black, unmarked car, BFX, due to where you sit on the corner act like I can't see you, the park ranger is trying to get pictures of me like I did July eleventh to Detective Joseph Russo, Middlesex County Internal Affairs, due to where how Nicholas DiFoppo is a big liar, and I will be turning him over to the state. I will do the same thing that I do, and you will, like I said, due to where, what, either way, with my arm being in a sling and out of a sling, what, I remove this, what, like I said, what? My arm will not move, what? So, you've got to, for each one of them that thinks that I'm damn faking, may the Lord let you have your damn day with the amount of pain that I'm going through, either way, with my arm in a sling or out. So, but like I said, continue, because the more and more issues, due to where, like I said, the more toward the lawsuit. And then, due to where, for you, Mrs. Nancy Carden, like I said, due to where you haven't been here, would you please pass these to her? I'm not even going to go over for you, which I sent to my lawyer as well, with you having from 2022 saying my phone is not on a tracker, lying. These are from 2024. Like I said, I got a whole list. I talked to Detective Russo, that was July eleventh, who said three weeks. I give him time, it's been over a month, due to where, what? No trust in New Brunswick Police Department, what? It was set up involving New Brunswick police officers for me to be attacked. But with the mason off, do I have the evidence? Yes, I am. What is the use of holding back with the body cameras? It's been over two months. What, my lawyer still hasn't gotten, 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 due to where to move on to with the lawsuit. What is it, due to where you're damn guilty, why I said I can't wait to go to court? But I'm not going to hold that up. But like I said, I'm expecting, what are you keep holding the body cameras for? Because like I said, what, New Brunswick was wrong, it was about hate. And like I said, due to where the other one, where he's a captain now, I see what his badge, I don't have it, but the one that was here last time, may the Lord let him have him day, because he was lying too. But now, I will move on to Mr. Dean. Yes, I am getting worried about him, I'm tired. Yes, I did take the time, five hours, with him in the cancer center today. I went to the doctors with him Monday and last week, due to where I'm trying to get him to a social worker, someone to help him, because I am getting scared for him, a day, due to where I reported to the police department as well how he gets confused sometimes. And then, due to a medical, but I do what I can do for Mr. Dean. And I'm not saying this for matters for what the city to try to get his damn house. And that's why I'm going to meet with a group of people to see what the decision is. But like I said, what I do is helping people. Like I said, I'm not no damn criminal, but like I said, due to where, but every time, like I said, where you tried to make it look like I was a criminal, what, one thing that you never paid attention to. What did I say when it came to nine-one-one, seven-four-fifty-five-two-hundred? Oh, you and Mayor Kayo better take me seriously when you need ambulance to Rockland Village. Did you take me, I can see things, like I said, I don't prove that to all of you already. Due to where, come on, and the next thing, come on, with Pittman Park. What, due to where, what? I know the New Brunswick, they never have the body cameras on. And I'm doing, they hate to see a black person do something damn good. Where I arrested three people at one time. I didn't care, I lost a hundred and fifty dollars, I didn't care because the Lord blessed me in another way. But something had to be cleaned up, due to where it's a pile there. People keep bringing more stuff over there. Come on, the school is going to open up the damn needles where I had to stop one from stepping on them, come on. Then with the rats over with the Walgreens, and with the park over there. Then I put the video up, why do I even have to keep proving something? Do you know good council members? And, but what, due to where, what, you act like you write it down like you really give it down? What, and it's not getting done? Please, you say you swear to touch the, to swear, you swearing to do the truth? What am I saying out of most of you? Like I said, you swearing, touch the damn Bible to what, make excuses for others? To lie? And then the last thing I'm going to say, oh, like I said, I will use in my case how Detective Nicholas saying, oh, we tell everybody stop resisting arrest. Wow, did they tell you Suzanne Carden to stop resisting arrest? No, because they never put you in handcuffs. And like I said, that's going to be a real strong hit on my case when you do see the video because what, really, was I under arrest? That's why they won't give you up the videos, due to where, what? I'll be glad to put it on TV, what happened? But like I said, New Brunswick is going to pay a price.
Thank you. Again, once again, council, you know, the council president's not here tonight. There were a number of matters where she had led us to expect to get answers here at this meeting. So, I'll try my best to ask these questions again. I know somebody else, not me, came up here and asked about the private security guards that are patrolling downtown. What powers do they have? I don't know, she didn't leave me any words. Does anybody know, maybe the liaison to the City Market? Anybody else want to get to that?
Well, I know they do have the power to try to move people along. They're working closely with the police department in areas of concern or when there's an emergency to make sure they have a better relationship. They're working with the business owners if there's an issue. They have the phones where the business owners can call them directly, and they can get there. Now, they have a golf cart so that he gets all these areas quicker. The response times are better, the business owners seem to like the program. I think it's working well. People have been voicing that they feel a little bit safer down there. They don't have the power to arrest anybody, of course. I mean, that lies above us.
Thanks. And it's my understanding this was a topic of discussion at today's city center meeting. Can you tell me, or maybe the police could tell me, what feedback did the police give on the security guard situation?
At the City Market meeting this morning, it was just addressed under all business and stated basically, just like I told you right now, there was nobody there during any presentation or speaking on the issue.
Do you know what the city center is going to do once the George Street closure ends? Are they going to continue to pay the security guards, or is that to be determined?
No, I believe that they are contracted to continue to patrol.
Continue through the end of the year?
I don't know when the contract ends, but it is not only for street closure.
Okay. I know Councilwoman Sikor Lewick missed the last two meetings, and before that, you had promised an update on your efforts to draft an ordinance related to fireworks. Is there any update on that or those efforts?
Again, I'm running into the same wall because I've been told that anything we would do would preempt the state law, and we're not allowed to do that. It is something that I could, I put forward a couple to Mr. Shami, a couple of different ideas, different ordinances that other cities have, cities and or towns. But apparently, if they were challenged on these, they would not hold order either, from what I'm told.
With respect to the noise, not the device, right? You can legislate on the noise, but not the actual device. It's preempted as well by state statute.
Okay. I have to ask about a very serious matter. I got a press release from the county prosecutor. Is it true that a New Brunswick recreation assistant was arrested and charged with endangering and welfare of a child as a result of inappropriate sexual contact that worker had with him on several occasions? That's what I meant to. Yeah. Is the defendant, Jawani Cruz, still employed by the city? Doubt it. I don't believe so. Can you confirm they were terminated? Can somebody confirm the status, terminated or suspended, or?
Mr. Anderson, this was a seasonal employee whose employment had terminated as a result of the date, the date of which I don't remember off the top of my head. Was no longer employed.
Okay. And can the city council or anyone here speak to what the city is doing to prevent other children from being in danger?
Mr. Anderson, if I could just, this is a pending investigation, criminal investigation. Don't discuss details. The one issue I can state is that both individuals involved in this particular matter were employees, seasonal employees of the city and council roles.
Thank you. I have a number of outstanding questions on the water quality violations. I don't even think I can get to all of them in the five minutes, but I have an extra minute? No. Okay. I'm also really upset that nobody's gotten back to me about this fire, where I read news reports that a firefighter was injured fighting a fire on July eleventh on the Rutgers campus. Those reports don't say which department the injured person belonged to. Do you have any details on the fire and if one of our firefighters was injured? It was not one of ours. Okay. Totally. Okay. Any detail of the cause of the fire? I don't have that. I'll follow up with that, thank you. Any other members of the public?
Sure.
Good afternoon, council members. Prado Caminos, reporter with New Brunswick today, on August tenth, around nine forty-four. August tenth, around nine forty-four, I made a call to New Brunswick Police Non-Emergency Number, reporting a Hispanic male was on top of the overpass in the intersection of three twenty-two CDM Street with Railroad Avenue. Police did respond faster than I thought, and I guess there was a nearby unit, he activated what is known as a takedown light that illuminates the entire vehicle with its bright LED lights. Now, as this man was actively laying down and graffitiing the entire bridge, this police officer was going by slowly, in my opinion, and based on what I saw on the security cameras, it should have been clear that these police officers observed this man actively graffitiing, because he was so busy doing that, laying down, that he did not even notice the cops until all the lights shined at him. However, the guy took off, and the cop just drove on by, leaving the scene. Now, I would like for the council members to find out what happened after this incident, because the entirety of the bridge has been vandalized, it's tagged, I don't know what those words mean, but it looks horrible, it looks ugly, now, in previous times, I, I reached out, took permission to, to paint over the graffiti with a neutral color that blends in with the bridge itself, the brown, I was allowed to, and I was told to contact city officials in the New Brunswick Police Department to notify them of my intent, I did notify the city and its police department, it was praised by Captain Miller back then, however, I would later get a notification from Mantrack, and this was after I had already completed the work of covering up this graffiti, stating that city officials contacted them to revoke this permission for me to paint over the graffiti and blend that in with the color of the brown, but now...
Did they mention which city official?
They did not, this, we're talking about a couple of years ago, you know, I've lived in this house almost my entire life, it's not a safe area, I've requested many things done, some things got pushed through, I was lucky enough to get a, a crime watch sign posted in front of the property, that's great, doesn't do much, crime's still there, somebody got their leg broken there, robbed the mug, and now we have this graffiti being done in the presence of police just driving by, not stepping out of the cars or taking a look at the bridge, shining their flashlight around, they saw the suspect, you see them on camera, straight up looking at it, I mean, these lights are not your normal standard one dollar flashlight, these are thousands of dollars worth of equipment on this patrol car, you can physically illuminate the bridge, see this, there's physically a male tagging the bridge in white graffiti letters. It's a shame, you know, that they let this guy go, because they can definitely harass other city members when they call them for services, but yet they let somebody who's tagging our streets, our properties, and doing all of this get away, because that's what they did, they let him get away, so we can get some explanations, what happened, these officers not observe them, where was their head, where were their eyes? Were their lights not bright enough, because they have spotlights, they also have streetlights that cost around two hundred dollars, and they illuminate pretty well, why didn't they not step out to investigate or make contact with the residents that live there, see what was going on, or drive through Railroad Avenue, see it, there was new graffiti around there, what was the follow-up after this call that I made regarding vandalism? Because they let the guy get away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking to the progress.
Any else in the public? Zingma?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikor Luvva? Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.